Ready to go, two minutes late.
Janet has some cares on the front porch.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, bagged up if you need any. I took a bunch. Yeah, well, I don't know, I haven't, but yeah, they were the ones that got last year.
Mm-hmm.
Very tasty.
Yes.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, I'm bringing some to my sister tomorrow.
Call a regular meeting in the town of Medellin to order at seven o'clock. I need to amend the agenda. Would someone like to make a motion to add the minutes for public hearing on, for the public hearing on August thirteenth?
I'll make a motion to add the hearing on August thirteenth to our minutes plan.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Has the council read the minutes from August, public hearing and the regular meeting on August thirteenth? And the open public meeting at eleven, the special meeting and executive meeting on August twenty ninth?
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from all five of the meetings in the month of August.
I'll make a motion to approve all the minutes in the month of August twenty twenty-five.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our first guest is Commissioner Rosenkrantz. He has requested fifteen minutes to make a presentation on the proposed EMS.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. I'm not sure it'll take fifteen minutes, but I will do my best. I'm gonna give expansive comments here about the broad strategic landscape that I see that's been, that has been pushing me to want to have an EMS district forum. Some of it has been a more recent development, and I'll start with more recent, but actually, I should start with, Meline is an independent body. You'll make your own decision whether to join into the district. It's entirely up to you. I do have a couple requests. The first is that before your next meeting, if you could submit to the commissioner's office, we would seize this feeling. If you have any comments, you have one draft files. If you don't have any draft files, please let me or Crystal know. I will make sure she sends them to you. I wrote those. They're expansive. They're kind of putting in everything that I saw as up for debate and consideration in the operation of the EMS district. I made them very fire district center to push as much of the operational decision-making to the fire districts as possible, since I know nothing basically about how a fire district operates. The fire districts, their commissioners, their fire chiefs do. So if you agree them and get them back. And then, once all those comments are received, the commission, the county commissioners will assemble their thoughts around those. We'll see, you know, what the will of the board is. We then have, we will then have a public hearing before any vote is taken. We're gonna have it, I believe, in the evening, in an evening, because Lee from Fire District Five said, "Have one in the evening." We said, "Great, let's do it." So we'll change the events if you get your comments in. And then after that, there'll be the opportunity for you to consider what the final version of an EMS district might look like in terms of its operation, and then take your vote as an independent entity, whether you want to be a member of that EMS district or not. Did that, did that come across clearly?
Yes.
I always want to check myself. So starting now going to the recent strategic landscape that has sort of reinforced my will to push towards the formation of an EMS district. And this does get somewhat political. The recent federal legislation that came out of Washington, D.C. is going to have some potential negative impacts on Medicare and Medicaid recipients in the county. And I've been communicating with Representative in Congressman from the Land Guard's office. I proposed amending legislation, two sentences that could be a companion to what has been proposed in the U.S. Senate by Josh Hawley from Missouri. So far, I haven't gotten traction, but I'm deeply concerned that the people of Pondry County, especially those who live at the margins and could be most deeply impacted by cuts to Medicare and Medicaid, that it will have downstream impacts on Newport Hospital. It affects their operating margins and their profitability and their sustainability. And that will have downstream impacts on the people who live in the county. Close that. So, you know, one question people ask is, is it necessary, is there a contingency to form an EMS district? Way that firefighters know that fire districts are operating at a high level of efficiency and effectiveness? They are getting the job done. They are in good shape. Cycles are long, but you never know how long they're gonna last. And... This is the spokesman review, the newspaper. This is from August thirteenth of twenty twenty-five, three weeks ago, talking about their EMS system. We're at that point of critical collapse. Stevens County officials attempting to navigate funding shortfall of the ambulance system. I talked to their commissioner. They really wish they had formed their EMS and EMS district before the crisis hit. This is me, I could be wrong. But it could go on for a very, 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 very long time before there was any kind of crisis or funding shortfall. But from my perspective, it's much better to form it and to have it in place, to have it and not need it, than to need it and not have it. So what it will ultimately look like, if, if, you know, it takes two votes to make policy in the county, I can't speak for my fellow commissioners, I'm supporting it. I've been on record on that. And, but leadership requires making decisions in advance of problems and heading them off to prevent a crisis mentality from taking hold that forces you to make decisions under really difficult conditions. That's my, that's basically all I have to say. So I will be asking for your support. You're an independent body. You'll make your own decision. We're a couple months away from, or a couple of meetings away from when, you know, you'd probably be asked, you would be asked to take a vote on whether...
Probably December.
Probably November, because I think what we're gonna have is the October, so comments will come in. If you, if you can agree at your October meeting, I think it's October tenth or something, the comments you'd like to submit, submit those. The commissioners will then get all the comments from all the towns and the fire districts. And I hope have their, have the public hearing before your November meeting. I can't promise that. I'm not for sure, so I didn't set you here. But it's, if it goes to December, it goes to December. I'm happy to entertain your questions.
And from what I've heard before, Medicare reimburses fire districts for ambulance service a little bit, but... So if that increases EMS...
Okay. And certainly, I would welcome your help on, I mean, because the reimbursement rates are, and for Medicaid, they're even worse. Correct. They're, the fire districts lose money a lot.
There, there are times when, yeah, when we respond, treat a patient, transport them to the hospital, and come away with less than what we started with. By then, we factory of maintenance, repairs, salaries, that kind of stuff. It, it was different when you had an all-volunteer department and you had two ambulances. And that's all that took care of everything in the north. The upkeep was much less. We now have more. You have faster response times in exchange for that cost, but, yeah. No, you're on the right path. We, we fully agree with Commissioner Rosenkrantz. Having an EMS district set up ahead of time would give us an opportunity to react quickly when opportunities come along. If grants are made available at federal level and we're not part of that because we don't have an EMS district, you won't get this done in time to get that. And that's what we foresee as a fire district. There's, there's gonna be federal opportunities we are missing out on now or have in the past already with some of the cares and the other tax that came through with COVID.
There's some urgency in this.
Yes, there could be.
The, the, the long sort of view of this is, the file on my desk shows that the county started working on the formation of this district in the spring of two thousand seventeen. It's been eight and a half years, and it ebbs and flows, and, I mean, somewhat, well, ironically, the driving force in my thinking this on initially was almost two years ago when Spofor had, they were in a difficult financial position, and they pushed the hard, "We need any..." Changing conditions. Leadership requires seeing beyond today's conditions to what the long view might be, and that's what I'm trying to do. Any more questions?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay, Mr. Bill Besson has requested fifteen minutes. Let's go to the council.
Hi, can you be, my name is William Besson. I'm a resident of Medellin.
Mr. Besson, can you please stand up, maybe address the council?
Sure, I can stand up and address the council.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyway, I'm William Besson. I live in town here in Medellin. Lived here for twelve years, going on longer. I, I've got some questions of some complaints I have here. I'm not worried about you guys answering them. Sorry, just took off, I apologize. No, I'm sorry, I apologize. Thank you. August fourth, two thousand twenty-three, I had a letter from my lawyer sent to town Medellin about blocking and other things that have to, first amendment. That would be put to USC, make the entry, first amendment rights. I've never had anything brought up on that back to me. Now, I put in a complaint with the town of Medellin. By the way, here's the lawyer's letter. If you have not seen her. Okay. Put that to... Town Medellin complaint form. This complaint is to the town council members to see attached sheets about Mr. David Mayor Janet Sullivan and Kelly Flanagan. These sheets were meant to go to the town council. It was put on, put off, put off. The mayor wrote, my wife and I both template sheets that just said, "Yeah, we taking care of it, blah, blah, blah." It was supposed to go to the town council, not, not him privately, not the clerk. So I'm gonna want that be submitted next month, so I'd have it down, yes?
What was the date on that one? Is it two September?
March thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Okay? So what I, what I notice is you guys talk about policies and transparency and accountability. I've heard you guys talking about building new policies and stuff. I haven't seen any of those ever come up, voted on, like Mr. Rosenkrantz is talking about. Policies are voted on to make sure that they're used effectively. And you were talking about, you know, doing Jade's job, how they were gonna change up and do certain ways. It was never brought up and voted on. So these kind of things need to be done and done correctly in order for council to be successful. There was one other thing that I had the other day that came a while back. I brought up public records requests, okay? I put in a request for two thousand twenty-three incoming outgoing emails. That's from January to December. Those are never fulfilled, okay?
What was, what was the date on that?
From January first, two thousand twenty-three to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. The only thing I got was a few incoming emails on, on the disk, you know, or the little thumb drives, and nothing's ever been taken care of ever since. So let me remind you folks that could be a civil violation, up to a hundred dollars a day per page if somebody wanted to go after it. So I'm just letting you guys know that. You need to, you need to start doing your jobs, everybody, not just the mayor and everything else. You, you've all gotta take and be accountable for this stuff. Anyway, the other day, I've seen three councilmen sitting on the steps of Mrs. Seedy's place. And I told the mayor that that's like a meeting. It constitutes, yes, it constitutes a quorum. The mayor said that they can sit on steps and stuff or do things like that, but it comes into serial meetings, a series of private communications between councilmen and other members, whether in person, by email, text, or phone, that involves a majority of the council. So I'm just reminding you guys that when you're out in public, that you have to be accountable for the out in public and places you're at. So... I'm just, I'm just trying to say that, you know, I've watched this council where they bring up things, and then it gets dropped and it gets lost into the ails of time and never gets brought back up to old business or anything. So... I'm just trying to let you guys know in a nice way that this needs to be corrected. And I hope it gets corrected, and I'd like to see it be lowered and better accounted for. Does that make sense to you guys?
Certainly.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lev.
I said, "Thank you for your comment."
Thank you. Go. Move on to the next item on the agenda to make this report from...
So our small water system monitoring plan is finally submitted for good. We won't have to touch that again for five years. Let's see, in the last month, we did have a water leak, pretty serious water leak in the middle of the night. We shut a lot of people's water off for about twelve hours. It turned out it was a new service that had a connection that came apart in the middle of the night. We took care of that. That's actually all I have.
We're gonna start, we're gonna need...
Oh, yeah, I forgot. I'm gonna be, we're gonna be in your yards next meet, reading meters, just so everybody knows.
Don't shoot. Okay. Old Business, update on the loan from the town of Ione. On Thursday last week, Mike Shitley, the mayor of Ione, personally presented me with a check for fifty thousand dollars from the town of Ione to help us navigate our current financial situation. I may have exceeded the speed on getting to the bank, but anyway. I deposited in the money market account. And I'm sure that I'm speaking for the council and the town of Medellin when I express my sincere gratitude and profound thank you to the mayor and council and citizens of the town of Ione for their generous support. And then that's that. Gives us a little bit of... On Good Business. Department of Commerce loan electric vehicle charging station. We need a motion to terminate any further involvement with the electric vehicle charging station project.
I will make a motion to terminate any further involvement with the Department of Commerce loan for electrical, electric vehicle charging station. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Got rules. We are, we need to appoint a new council member. The council will vote on accepting the appi, an application to fill the vacant council position number three. And I'll let Jade tell us how we're gonna do that.
Everybody takes a verbal vote. Which are the ones? A verbal vote for the candidates.
Do you have a list?
We have Dana Powell. We have Morgan Rice, and we have...
Amanda. That's our three candidates. You get to hand it off.
Well, I'm against a verbal vote, but that's my personal feeling too. After reviewing all three of them, and they're all friends of mine, this is the part that I don't like too. I would much rather we just had a closed vote, and then they said, "That's who got it," and we'd know that. And I don't want to kick anybody off. You're good friends of mine, all three of you, but I think I'm gonna have to go with Morgan.
Janet? Oh, sorry.
Elishen.
Well, fortunately, unfortunately for me, I was only in for one, and it was Morgan, so I'm going for...
My vote is for Amanda. I liked how she was prepared, she was ready, and what she could bring to the town.
I'm gonna have to go with Amanda Burnett.
Mayor breaks the tie.
Mayor breaks the tie. This is the second time I've had to do that. Knowing how old you are that I could flip a coin, it's hard to predict.
Something that every, that you guys need to know, those stay on file for six months because things are forever changing, like Robert said, you never know what's gonna happen. So we will hold those for six months.
Okay.
We could do that. Yeah.
Do we need a motion on the second to accept Amanda before she does the...
Yes.
Do we?
We should disperse it.
I'm gonna have a motion to accept Amanda Burnett as our council member number three.
Second.
We need to make a motion.
I make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept Amanda Burnett as our councilperson number three.
I'll third it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can just read this actually all according to the MRS, they all have to assign it with this.
Okay.
Traditionally.
There's a little X in the council word. Okay, all right, well, I'll read it for the council first.
Please do.
I, Amanda Burnett, do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States and of the state of Washington, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of council member of the town of Medellin to the best of my ability.
Here it is. Could you put your check right?
You better get a chair up here.
We actually have a commissioner's report that I, Ryan isn't here.
He just sent me a text, he's not gonna make it.
Right, you would like to, it does an overview of us going on that, the commissioners.
Certainly, we are heading into budget season. There's a significant difference between revenues and proposed expenses, three million dollars, that we will have to bridge, and we will do it. There will be some hard decisions to be made, and that's part of the role of serving in public office. Today, in Newport Minor, it was announced that recently, I think in the last couple days, the county got a twelve-point-one million dollar award for the broadband something development, and the four-point-one million dollar match from the Department of Commerce. I am representative to broadband action team and am delighted with that. The provider for Meline is either hammer, it's, um...
There's two.
There's two.
Yeah.
One is... Yim, Yimun Selim, is it? I think it is something like that.
No, there's, well, there's...
There's Amala Kuiper, I think it's called.
Yeah.
And I talked to Jim Couples, the superstar lead on this today, and he said the technology to deliver by satellite internet services has evolved tremendously in the past couple years, and that the service areas that are going to be served by satellite is going to be close to what it is with fiber. Yes, sir.
Did they happen to mention when that will go in? Right now, they have five satellites up in May, need two thousand for three thousand.
They need a lot of satellites.
Yeah.
Agreed. The time, I can't answer that question, what the launch of the satellites will be. The timing for implementation is between now and June of two thousand twenty-six. The contract for design, the project will be scoped in terms of the actual construction. I don't, I can't speak to that.
It will actually be able to serve the site, I don't think.
Yeah.
They're going into competition, uh, competition, but...
Certainly. And so, so that is heading in the right direction. Broadband service that North County particularly has not had on a, on a scalable level, it's going to come. I'm hoping they stick to their timing, and with Jim Couples in charge, I have a high degree of confidence that's the case. Beyond that, I don't want to take any more time than necessary. County moves on, the US Bridge replacement, we're working with Congress and Baumgartner's office to get already allocated federal money. This was from, it's already been allocated, appropriated, it's sitting there, getting his office to carry that to the right door at Federal Highway Administration to knock on and say, "Here's our application." They have yet to find the right door to knock on. So we're pushing as hard as we can to make that happen. Beyond that...
Can I interrupt?
What, what bridges does that involve again?
The US Bridge.
The US one?
Yeah, it's, and, and just one more minute. The, the program that was designed under the previous administration's infrastructure bill, each state got one small bridge and one large bridge that have priority for getting this funding. Small is under a hundred million dollars. Big is, large is more than a hundred million. The US Bridge comes in at ninety, at ninety-eight and a half million dollars. The general financing proposed is seventy-eight million dollars from the bridge fund. The Kalispel tribe has agreed to reappropriate thirteen and a half million dollars that was previously appropriated by the Washington State Legislature for a companion bridge, bicycling pedestrians, to a new bridge and to get six million dollars in...
Why?
Yes, from, from the Bureau of Indian Affairs. The right of way that the county owns is sufficient to construct the new bridge while still having part of the old bridge in place, so there'll be continuous service. Maybe one lane at times, but there will be no significant interruption to any service on that bridge.
Presence of might not do, destroying the bridges between here and us.
Amen, amen, thank you. Another, I think that's my time. If there are any questions, I'd have to be...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Blake, sleep.
Hey, Mayor.
Counsel. First thing is, thank you to the three people that threw your name in the hat for the council positions. It's often very uncomfortable to sit there and to make decisions for the town. The fact that a small town has three people while they put their name in, it's pretty awesome. Thanks for being willing to...
The second round.
You had six calls for service. Uh, first was an agency assist, which was Adult Protective Services was looking into potential financial exploitation of elderly. Um, they weren't sure how it would go when they arrived, and so they asked us to accompany them. There was no issues with it, everything was fine. The harassment was, harassment was one neighbor that was yelling at the other. Missing person was an overdue wood cutter that, uh, while we were responding and gathering more information, they showed back up there just late. Paper service was just us delivering some court papers to someone. Suspicious circumstance was a person who found surveillance and listing devices in their house, and they decided to go with the FBI, so the FBI allegedly has been up there to investigate that problem, so, um, we, we have no knowledge of what went on with that. And then the welfare check was a possible depressed person, so we got them in touch with council and services. Those were your six calls for service. Any questions or issues within the process? I have one other thing, and it's a request for not just the council, but all of the citizens. So, starting in January, the new legislative session comes up, which is when all of your legislators get together, and start making a will that affects all of us. Uh, yesterday, I spent several hours down in Yakima with sheriffs and chiefs and trying to figure out what our legislative priorities were, what law enforcement things do we want our lobbyists to work for, and, and, you know, try to, try to push on our behalf. And what we realized is we had a list of fourteen priorities, and we were supposed to narrow it down to three priorities. That's not even realistic. There is so much going on there that adversely affects us, adversely affects you. So, my request is help from the public getting more involved in the legislative process, understanding who your legislators are, how to communicate with them, how to look up bills, uh, have to find out, you know, what you're interested in commenting on, how to provide a competent and respectful comment to them, uh, and just let them know, I often hear that, you know, that Olympia doesn't care, they don't listen, um, we don't count, and I personally think that's because we're not using our voice, and certainly not using it effectively. So, to that end, uh, last year, we had James McMahon, who is lobbyist for law enforcement, uh, in the state. He works in Olympia, his job is to make relationships with legislators and try to push, um, common sense into law enforcement, uh, bills that they're trying to pass. He came up to Newport and did a couple hour conversation, which was fantastic. And so, uh, the Seltzer Sun was there, they videotaped the whole thing, and I talked to Sonia the other day. I don't know, she was having some glitches in it, um, but, uh, but she was supposed to have a link so that we can direct you where to go, where you can watch this, and understand how the legislative process works, where the key points are, when you can contact it and have the most effect. It was a fabulous talk, but it was a little lengthy, so you're gonna wanna do this in your spare time, probably over a couple of days, but fantastic information in that. Uh, along with that, uh, a couple of months ago, we do the Coffee with the Coffee events, um, in Melonie Falls and also, uh, in Melonie Falls with the, with the, uh, the Legion, the veterans up there. I did a very short presentation on how you get onto the legislative website, how you find out who your legislators are, how you find out how to contact them. During the legislative session, I can't keep up with the number of bills that are there, but there is a way you can go in and just type in law enforcement, and bring up every bill that has to do with law enforcement, with fire services, with any topic that you're interested in, schools. Um, and it will list every bill that they're working on that has anything to do with that particular topic. Then you read through them and find out which ones you wanna, um, uh, weigh in on, or which ones you wanna kind of keep tabs on. Yeah, so there's a lot to sort through, and, you know, some of them get swept out pretty easily and, and quickly, some of them linger on, and it's, it's really hard to keep up with things, it's intimidating at first, um, but we have to spend more attention to this. So the other thing that I'm going to do is, uh, a couple of months ago, our office started a weekly newsletter, and it's just a one-page, page newsletter that we put out on our social media. Probably first of October, I'm gonna do a very, very short series, probably just four, a little columns, that talk about why you wanna communicate with your legislators and how to do that, um, you know, how to write something down, what are they looking for? When you write something down, you can't just go, you know, use, you know, this, this is stupid. That doesn't give them any information, and I don't like reading things that are derogatory, they don't like reading things that are derogatory, but you can use that system to have a well-thought-out, uh, conversation with them, and let them know what your thoughts are and how this affects you. So, uh, again, three, four, maybe five weeks, I'm gonna do those snippets on how this works, and do that before the legislative session starts, so that you can kind of run it through your mind, kind of get a better handle on it, ask me questions, ask Robert questions, uh, anybody else that could be knowledgeable of the process and all that, so that we can, in pondering, kind of use our voice to the best effect to hopefully have some common sense come out of Olympia for change, so. I will try to do my part, I'm just hoping that I can get some other people to help me out and do their part. So, if you have any questions or concerns about any of that.
Would you consider it within your purview to give us a list of the bills that you're concerned with?
When those bills start coming out, I will absolutely start blasting that on the social media and also at the meeting, and give you a list of ones that we're most concerned about, and we can have input on this.
Right, right, true.
Yeah. Mayor, do you have permission just for one more minute? So, uh, and I apologize for forgetting this, and this piggybacks on what the sheriff just said, under the broadening of, we can go to Olympia and make our case, we want Olympia to come to the Congress on Thursday, September twenty-fifth, from ten AM until noon, Washington State Senate Majority Leader Jamie Peterson, who has been described as the most powerful legislator in the city of Washington, he controls the Senate. He will be in Ponderay County, I've worked a long time to get him to come here, there's a personal connection there, to address exactly what the sheriff was talking about. He's never been here, he doesn't understand this, and I just kept saying, Senator, you need to come visit to see what your legislation is doing to places that have nothing in common with your there. So, I invite everyone, Thursday, September twenty-fifth, just, uh, from ten AM to noon. His politics are different than mine, and for much of Ponderay County, he's a good person, ignore our politics are different, he will listen. So I'm, I'm always optimistic, I'm optimistic that something good will come for him soon. This is what the rest of the state, if you will, thank you.
Thank you for letting me. What was his name again?
Uh, Jamie, J-A-M-I-E, last name Pedersen, P-E-D-E-R-S-E-N.
And what's the location of the venue?
At the commissioner's office at the old courthouse in Newport. It, it only holds, you know, forty people and, um...
We should pack it.
We should, oh, we will pack it, yeah, and, and we'll, we're, we're working on an overflow plan for the lobby, and we want, we want him to get the message that people care about this county, they love this place, and that many of the rules that come out of Olympia, they're written for Seattle and Bellevue, and they have no applicability here.
But you can't just get the drive up here, just to show them what, I mean, it just shocked me when I drove up from LA to see how this is...
I'm, I'm hoping that he's willing to, because I would like him, I'd like to drive him to the Canadian border and...
Well, and, and we're getting notice, along with that, uh, with Coffee with the Coffee events, we have Steve Brooklyn, who's a representative for Baumgartner's office, that comes to every one of those in Melonie Falls and in Newport. I've got commitments from, uh, Hunter Abel and Andrew Engel, that they're gonna start showing up to these appearances periodically as well. And what I've found is when they show up in our counties, usually, I have a hundred things on my mind, and I get about three minutes with them to go, ah, crap, I forgot what I was gonna tell you. Um, when you go onto legislative websites, you go onto their favorite, or, excuse me, their social media pages and, and emails and that kind of stuff, you can sit at home and formulate a thought, and type it out, and get all of your thoughts in an organized manner, instead of going... Because that happens to everybody. And what I've noticed is when they come here and they come to have a conversation with us, they don't take notes, they don't have somebody typically who's taking notes, so I don't know how much of what they hear they're actually retaining and able to take back. You can put it in writing, it's now a permanent record, and they can always refer back to that, so. Long-winded story, but I'm hoping I can get more involvement from Ponderay County to use our voice to express our issues to Olympia.
Yeah, one, one final, final... I'm sorry, so, uh, Senator Shelley Short, who is a fantastic power state senator, will be in Newport on September twenty-fifth when we meet with Jamie Peterson, because I'm the county commissioner, she's a peer of his. So, I'm really hopeful that we will not only get traction and his attention in that meeting, but that we'll then have State Senator Short being able to serve his people. Thank you.
Yes, I, I just wanna say that, I just wanna say that the Seltzer Sun is still working on fixing glitches that Blake's mentioned, and the video should be up on YouTube shortly.
Thank you.
All right. So I have your numbers for the month of August. For Fire District Two, we have a total of two hundred and thirty-eight calls for service. This is up from two hundred and twenty-one last year. Uh, town Melonie have a total of five EMS calls, so, which is also up from last year, which was only three, so, you guys are still doing good. Uh, I, I'm sure Sheriff would agree. Your town, be it small, is nice and quiet, not really...
Don't use the Q word.
I'm not as superstitious as some of my, my colleagues, for sure. Do you guys have any questions? Is there anything about the Fire District I can answer?
How many, how many trucks have you got out on...
So, right now, today, I just had one come back today, so I have six of them that are out working on fires in Washington and Oregon, so...
I seen one yesterday coming back from Colville.
Right.
This side of Thomas Lake someplace, parked on the side road, I assumed they'd shut that road down, but...
Uh, Thomas Lake, the...
Coming this way, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, if you go out, we...
Tacoma was shut out.
Yeah, that stuff is shut down back there. We're not actually, we haven't put any equipment on the, uh, concrete fire.
Well, it might have been a Stevens County, I just seen it with an ambulance.
Sure, sure. I, I don't know that ours were over there, other than, uh, we've run equipment back and forth, but, so. We are working with the state as they mobilize equipment and put it out. Uh, six, seven, is, right now, is about the limit of what we can put out, and still maintain good coverage throughout the county, so. Again, we provide those ALS services from the city of Newport all the way north here to the Canadian border, so, that takes a good handful of us, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, William.
Councilman, what's your question here first?
I really appreciated having the, uh, OPMA meeting, I think the whole council got a whole lot of good information out of that, um, which was educational. Um, other than that, I've been a little bit out of the loop lately, I've been dealing with fires already, Stevens County, Parrish property, so...
Which one are you shot?
With, with beautification, hold on.
I skipped Janet.
Oh.
I'm going by the little stunt man.
Oh. Beautification, we are doing something different for Halloween this year, we're doing a trunk or treat. So, of course, it won't be as grandiose as it's been in the past, but, and, once we get things a little bit more nailed down, we've got a couple, um, banners coming, um, we're going to ask cars to register and then decorate their car, or their four-wheeler, or their side-by-side, or even a table if you don't have anything else, and then the kids, there will be, um, costume contests, um, and kids, and, and then the cars, the, the children will be able to go to the different cars to trick or treat, trunk or treat, and, um... No, no, no hangman items, we're going to ask that everybody registers their vehicle with us, so we don't take, you know, that, there isn't any questions to who should be there, who shouldn't. It's, we're not gonna have all the big toys, the big blow-up, all, it's, like I said, it won't be anywhere as grandiose as it has, as it has been in the past. It's just, we're gonna kind of dial it down, kind of start from scratch again, and we're thinking we're going to have, like, hot chocolate and coffee, and we'd probably have the fire pit going, but that's probably gonna be the extent of it. Um, the Falls Market, they are looking at donating some pumpkins, potentially we might have, um, caramel apples. Again, I don't know all the details yet, but this is stuff, something we're working on, we're trying to, trying to get something going for the kids, because I know it's kind of exciting to be able to do something, it's just not going to be as big of a deal, so, that's where we are.
Do you have a date?
Um, the Saturday be, yes, and actually, I need to, yes, the Saturday before Halloween, one to three. And yes, we were going to ask if there's a chance you might be able to come and help us, or decorate something, or bring something up.
I'm sure I can send some equipment, some verified.
That'd be fantastic. One to three.
So a lot of stuff going on that's squeezing to do our thing.
Well, it's, it's trick or treating for vehicles, I mean, like I said, we're not gonna have the big games, we're not gonna have that, it's just walking around and then a costume act, yeah.
Janet?
Oh, I don't know if I can say this, but I'm gonna throw it out there. My wish is to, for the council and mayor, to have an executive session, deal with these issues, get them dealt with. I will abstain from the meeting completely, of course. I would request that Glenn be there if you can, and I'm gonna request that Brian Smythe would be there, and Amanda, I can't remember her last name.
Oh.
No.
No.
No. Yeah. And they sit in on this, and you guys, and I, yeah, whatever you guys decide. My heart and mind is good with that.
Maybe our town attorney should be present.
Yes, he would be, I've already discussed this.
Okay.
Rick? Yeah. Well, a couple things, Park looks nice, getting it ready for fall, I see, and we should, good Lord willing, next week's what I was told, we may put the new flagpole up at the cemetery, so, it'd be nice to get that up finally, and... We've been working on it, we poured the concrete for the base, it's all ready, so, with the... Uh, Bear, kind of the leader, that Bear Holder, so he's had a little body's plate lately, so... Anyway, I think, uh, he told me yesterday morning that it'd possibly be first part of next week, he was gonna try to get a forklift at less than fifty feet so we can make it in one pick, good Lord willing, and... Park looks good, and I don't know what we're gonna do with that pile down there, but, all the trees and limbs and over in the corner that everybody's taking their yard stuff to, which is fine, there's no, there's no boards or anything in there that I see, I'm just saying that we're gonna have to deal with that either later in the fall, or...
Maybe you can arrange for a chipper.
Well, yeah.
Does everyone have a Treasury's report?
Okay, okay.
Oh, why?
Need a motion to accept the Treasury.
Hold on, we gotta go.
Can I add that now?
I'll be good beginning.
Yeah, okay, we'll do it next time.
Um, let's start with the check register, which is all the claims and checks from a hundred, from one-six-one-three-two through one-six-one-four-nine. So, these are all the checks that went out last month, and they are, should be all in order, so you guys can see all of them. But that's for the month of August, you guys can go through those. And then, um, this would be their receipt register, so this is our utility payments that came in, and the Treasurers receipt, if we got, like, something from Ponderay County Treasurer's Office, or, um, the extra water sewer sale, stuff like that. Um, so that's all the money in.
I'll start that.
And those should be in order also.
Yeah, okay, that's what I, after this or now? What was it?
It's a lot.
Okay. Uh, Glenn, when she sets up a vote for that, she will let you know.
For two one?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot attached to just that one.
If you can't be present, maybe you can do that?
Possibly.
No, there was two. So this is.
A lot meters.
Cause the receipts, there's receipts both there also.
Yeah. It's nice to see a positive.
Okay, so there's two, I see the cemetery, there's two I see.
And then, oh, it's a passer. There's a twenty five dollar one you guys will see soon too. It's a passer.
Sure, that's good. This one was voided?
Yeah, and we had, I think I have, yeah. There's a note on the, the front of it.
What was that one?
That was one I had you sign off on. It's on the front of the.
Oh, sorry.
Is that the one that's stamped?
I switched the I fiber and R T I.
Yeah.
It's what happened.
It happens when you have phone calls and people talking.
And then I assume there will be a list to refer very soon to follow any orders.
We don't have any, we don't have any ones.
Okay. Oh, I think I've got it. Thank you.
And then there's that one from money in.
This is all our money going? Not including the, the fifty thousand, you can tell beyond the next month. Heck yeah. Did everyone get a change to look at these?
Yeah, there's only that one.
Um, since we're dealing with this and I know that it's budget season time, um, we were able to meet with the state auditor with a it was like a fast like pop up meeting, uh, me, me and Janet and uh, we get to take a phone call with the um, auditor from Spokane. So I can actually, or we can actually maybe get a starting point on our budget or what to do with this part.
We're trying to find out how we build the budget.
What our timeline is gonna look like or anything to what, where do we start? So that's tomorrow.
Have you looked any more into uh, some of the M R S C that I was being training?
Um, I didn't do M R S C, but I did do three days the last week of August with Springbrook.
Okay.
And they had um, some quick classes. They were about an hour and a half, but they were really helpful. But it's not the information that I'm looking for from the auditor. It was more mainly like using the software and like, you know, what can go where, are you ready to use any sort of like.
Having to clear the software from the areas.
Um, I've got, just a quick update on treasurer's report here. I've been kind of got a rough draft of some of our uh, some amendment to our uh, policies. Um, in reference to the treasurer's report and how I'd like to kind of see it done every month. Um, I'd be happy to distribute that before the next meeting so we can have a chance to review it and um, I'll try to get that out here and especially Jade, so maybe you can do some of it.
Yeah, so we have, so our next meeting, we will have um, some amendments, some resolutions. Um, it was just a law for this. We can fit it in. Um, but it's coming, it's being worked on.
Okay. Well, I don't think we could tag it onto that, but I'll say this.
When are these reports ready? And is it okay if I look at them before the meeting?
Yeah, usually so I, wait, for the monies, I like to do it, I spend the whole day, like all day today. I did everything. That's my whole day. It's just preparing for this meeting. So like nine o'clock I get here. You could even run up with me if you wanted and help me organize and I could use the help at this point.
Got it.
Yeah, and in the policy that I've drafted, it says that you may rotate one of us every month, go through them with Jade before the meeting and so that everyone gets a chance.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable just looking at them right now on this very quick um, like preview. I would wanna sit down ahead of time. And I also wanna sit down with Jade sometime and understand exactly what these reports are telling us.
Okay.
So that I can see.
Which any one of you at any time can come in and we can look at them together. Cause I'm still learning. I'm sure you guys.
It's a law too.
It's a law.
And also pretty tight considering. So in the past, when I first got on the council, we had two people appointed by the council. Councilmen that would be responsible for reviewing these things. And uh, so we can maybe speak this across this up a little bit and something we can consider later.
I want that workstation put back.
I'm sure there's probably an ordinance that spills that out, but it's not in our policies. So I'd like it easily accessible.
There was a lot of, we're doing it because this is the way it's always been done. So it's not going on. That, that needs to stop.
So did everybody, okay, I'm just gonna go through my treasurer's report, I think, of what you guys are looking at. Um, so bills and P M O claims, check numbers, one six one three two through one six one four nine was on the check register I gave you guys for the month of August. And that was a total of six thousand forty eight dollars and ninety four cents, just for claims. The P M O was three thousand one hundred sixty six dollars and seventy two cents. So that brings our total claims to nine thousand two hundred fifteen dollars and sixty six cents for August. Um, my receipt register total for money in for the month of August, uh, twenty twenty five was twenty three thousand five hundred and three dollars and fifty five cents. You guys should all, I can get you a copy of that. It's okay.
I'm actually gonna abstain tonight from the vote because I don't feel like I know enough. So.
Uh, is my treasurer's report and that's why I just asked for it to you guys.
Do you want me to speak on the bills now?
That's next. Cause you guys gotta approve your reports.
I need a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Well, we gotta, we'll work with those first.
Well, we want to just, we'll prove that first. Or just the treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report.
I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report for August twenty seventh.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll favor it. Motion passed.
Okay, so. We have regular monthly bills. Um, and then I'm finding we have some that, you know, come in randomly. Um, but these are like our running, keeping town hall online bills. Um, so the front is the check that would be sent to them and then attached is the invoice that comes from them. So you guys can look at that. Um, but these are, so we have uh, Anatech, which does the water testing for us. Um, we have J P's, his training, he did, he's doing two of them. Um, he passed one of them already. This would just be his reimbursement check card. And then um, these are his receipts that he paid for him out of pocket. This is contractors for the cemetery. Um, and his invoice is also on the back. And you guys have R T I, which is phone. We have the Minnowing Mini Mart, which is our fuel account. Um, Andre County Sheriff's Office, monthly payment, I fiber, our internet, um, Andrei beauty. And our excess, so our garbage stuff. And this is all stuff for you guys to look at. It's, some is like September. They're kind of somewhere left behind and then. I would say yes. Some weeks like. It'd probably be a better question for Jade, for Jade, for Usha. Cause I don't know. I know, J P, do you explain the testing, the water testing, Anatech?
Oh, yeah. So Anatech tests the water every month. Uh, and then we were testing wastewater there for about a month too, but we're back testing at high school now.
We have a very large one.
For Canatech?
For Anatech.
Because the wastewater is expensive.
It is expensive.
And then the small one and then the big one.
So yeah, we test water there every month and then randomly we have to test water there. It's, the Department of Health Centers will just send me stuff saying you need to go test for this. So we have to take it down there.
Anything that can't be done at the high school, we have to take it down.
Yeah, they don't test any water at the high school. Nothing with the water, just wastewater.
And that Anatech builders go down because now we're going back to wastewater.
Uh, cause I looked at that too and that one was ninety. So.
Well, the clean water also.
Unfortunately, we have.
That makes sense.
Um, also, um, our R T I, you're gonna notice from last month to this month, it was, last month it was a hundred and forty four and this month it's a hundred and fifty four. They took our ten dollar credit away because we no longer process through our debit card. So it's they gave us ten dollars out.
Do you want me to move this one over? You can have one of these.
You guys can just send them out. These were the random invoices that I got. I don't know. I wasn't comfortable writing a check for them because I know that, you know, some bills can wait, some bills are like, we need this now, now, now. Um, and I don't feel comfortable making that decision by myself. Okay, so I want you guys to look through these.
And J P, you open your.
Yeah, these are like um, end of August, September bills that I received. If you guys want to look through.
They're not pertaining to the orange bottle at all?
No.
Okay, good.
That was in the water angle.
You're targeting for that?
No, that was, that's a different, that's adverse earthworks, right? That's for a curb stop that David King's property that was on our side of the meter that we had to dig up.
Okay.
That, that was a total different, there was a water leak.
And Dave's like the one that's ran across the new marden, correct?
And I don't know if it's usually from a deep place or.
That's overblown.
We actually have our fire extinguishers. Um, we had to be.
There was no charge for the station section, was there?
That's small.
That is small.
From striking the red.
Yeah, those are for the uh, cartridge filters at the water plant. So we, we had a blockage at the wastewater plant and it filled up our overflow tank.
Okay.
So I was able, I'm able to pump most of our overflow tank back into our system, but after a while, this stuff gets really nasty in there. And I can't put it back into our system. So Horton's had to, had to pump it.
Okay.
They have lagoons there differently. They can handle that.
Sure.
We can't handle that. But I'm trying, I'm looking around. New hydrants. And I'm, I haven't really much luck, but.
Some of these they have to be.
You guys are part of the A W C. I wonder if there's not another town, like a resource, like somebody else who's upgrading. It's gonna top something. Cause I know, I know we're talking about older hydrants. So if somebody else thinks they still can't get rid of their nineteen eighty five hydrants, but nineteen eighty five, that's their direct.
Newport I heard just did that. And I would ask you for it. They said they didn't have any.
Is that, that's the water point?
Or is that the water? That's something to put on the.
We're looking for.
The cemetery electric is three seventy four.
I think it's all on cemetery.
That seems like.
Oh, it's all the street lights.
That's one of those things the A W C could do that would actually be useful. Cause all I hear about is all the payers and all this stuff.
I'm sure they do use some of it.
We don't have the team. But, but uh, but uh, I know the Washington Fire Chiefs Association is not set up that way. So like if your department's getting rid of an engine, you can actually post it there. And then another department doesn't have to be that next door. They would be on the other side of the state taking. Yeah, or, yeah, or it goes somewhere else. Yeah, where we can, everybody who's a member. I know for a lot of this stuff, there's always somebody, I'm sure Glenn would love to just buy a new truck car, but you probably would pass it to the far end. The union's saying everything has to meet like this kind of criteria. But I know what fire department.
That's really great. Glad you're bringing it coming around here.
But I gotta imagine.
You can grow that up on her later.
Thirty year old hydrant. They're dealing with bricks. Out of the, somebody.
That's what I've, I've been asking. Newport, I thought I was on to something in Newport, but.
And I had heard years and years ago, Newport, uh, one of the guys down there, I think it was Ray. I don't know if that's, you recognize him, Ray King. He was like the city maker guy. And he was, he had helped somebody up here. Cause one of the towns.
I, I thought that was.
Like we were scanning something about it. They had him up. I think, if I understood right, the city of Newport had a couple of spiders. That's what they came and helped them change one out. They all come, sure, you can do the first one. And then you'll know what you're.
At least give us the.
Have nobody training before somebody's like, just change this.
I think all the time, everybody you look at the hy, everybody looks at that hydrant, sees the cube part on top. Okay, so look at this.
It's like eight bolts, right?
It goes forever down there. It goes forever down there.
And if it's something that they overlook, it just delays and it's.
These are all our outstanding bills for better. That one has been, has been overlooked, but, um, Springbrook is one of our, I don't see it's.
My comment on that is that Springbrook and getting insurance, that's what the fifty thousand is, is parked for. These are excess bills that we were left holding. And Jade needs approval to start pecking away at these as monies are coming in and we're able to pay them. So we just need the council to make a motion, approve that, so that we can get this, and they have been turned over. So the evidence, for evidence of that, but we need to get them paid.
I don't know if you guys wanna go through it right now or, um.
Come into the office and look through.
We could do, it's tough. You guys could do like a special meeting to where you guys can, but there's a lot in there. You guys can discuss it, but you would have to, um, make, take action on them in a regular meeting.
I can do a.
Cause looking at our policies and procedures, he has a thousand dollars in his head, I have five hundred, and that was the limit given to the clerk. To Kane, the Kane that comes in, but anything over five hundred has to have council approval.
Everything's twenty bills for a thousand dollars.
Exactly, exactly. Some of those are in order.
I agree, we should have maybe a special meeting and prioritize them based on sort of late fees and charges we're getting.
Yeah, we've been sticking with these people for.
Well, they've been contacted. They, they are aware.
I don't know the situation, thanks, but I if we can do this next week, maybe.
Whenever Jade has time.
Have a special meeting to.
I'm mushing your table, the outstanding bills section to a special meeting.
Second. All in favor? Anyone like to make a public comment? Would someone on the council please make a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's shorter than something there.